Thank you, you too.
Good evening. This is the annual meeting of the Town of Newry Maine Planning Board. The regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Board will follow immediately after the annual meeting. Per the Planning Board bylaws amended June 18, 2024, the annual organizational meeting will be held during the first regular scheduled meeting of the Planning Board in July. The primary purpose of the annual meeting is the election of a chairperson, a vice chairperson, and a secretary. The Planning Board consists of three members, three full members and two alternate members. The current membership roster is Bruce Pierce with a term that expires in 26, myself Ted Baker, term expires in 27, and John Gooch-Gothier with term expires in 28. We have two alternates who are on a year-to-year appointment basis. They are Meredith Hara and Rod Cates. I want to thank Gooch, Meredith, and Rod for continuing their commitment to the Planning Board for another three years. Thank you all very much. Do any members of the Planning Board have any comments or announcements? Mr. Chairman, members of the Newry Planning Board, Becky and the Newry CEO. I am feeling overextended in the organizations and the positions that I sit in. I'm feeling the need to scale down on some of them. And unfortunately, I feel that I'm struggling with my commitment to the work needed to perform to the standards of what is required for the Newry Planning Board, which does not appear for the rest of the board. It has been my honor and pleasure to work with all of you over these past few years. I am submitting my retirement from the Newry Planning Board effective immediately. Respectfully, Bruce S. Pierce. He'll be refreshments afterwards. I'm like, I got a cooler than the truck. How long have you been on the board?
I have no clue.
This is the second time around, right? This is 2.0 for you?
Well, I mean, I was years ago. I mean, I was on there for a long time and then five or so. I don't know. I have no idea.
We respect you and appreciate that you're kind of spent here.
There's a copy for that.
We will miss you.
I say, I just, I just, I feel like Steve White. For those of you who know Steve White, it's like, oh, my God, yeah.
All right.
Struggling with it.
And thank you for it. You're always welcome back. At least in the audience anyway.
I'll see if I can find a replacement.
In view of Bruce's resignation from the board, I am tabling nominations and election of officers until we have a full-time third boardman member appointed.
You can ask one of your alternates if they want to step up.
Let the cat out of the bag.
Rob?
That's a highly esteemed position. Meredith.
Give it, give it some thought. Let us, let us know.
Or you can go on. Whatever you want to do.
You did run for such refreshments after. All right. Well, anyway, so I will need my book and book. Rob and Meredith. Rob, I think you have seniority. You have the right of first. Sorry?
They're like twins.
So you're gonna think on it?
I'm gonna think on it.
So at that, we will table nomination and election of officers until we have a third full-time member on the board. With that, we close the annual meeting of the Newry Planning Board, and we move on to our regularly scheduled meeting. This is the July 2nd, 2025 meeting of the Town of Newry Maine Planning Board. This meeting will come to order. My name is Ted Baker and I am the chairperson for the board. This is a public proceeding, and you, the public, have the right to hear everything that's being said unless the board votes to enter into executive session for Maine's Freedom of Access Act. You also have the right to review any of the material created or received by the board that relate to the board's deliberation, unless state law makes that document confidential. Please notify the board if you are unable to hear or if you would like access to any material. If not, the meeting was adjourned. Tonight's meeting is being audio recorded. If you'd like or need access to this or previous meeting audio recordings, please see the town's administrator. I would also like to welcome Western Hill Access Television and its viewers. Please note, if you have not already done so and you are here in person, please sign in. This is a working session of the Planning Board. Maine Freedom of Access Law entitles the public to attend the meeting, take notes of the meeting, and make an audio or visual recording of the meeting. The board's policy is not to allow public comment during the meeting. However, as chairperson, I may make exceptions when it is in the interest of the board. An example of an exception would be to allow in the butter to address the board. By the Newry Planning Board bylaws, this meeting may not last for more than two and a half hours. The meeting may be extended by 30-minute increments if a motion to extend or the pro vote is made for each 30-minute increment. If the meeting is not extended, any remaining agenda items or discussion will be tabled at that time. Tonight's agenda includes the following businesses. Correspondence received, a pre-application conference concerning Lot Summit Estate subdivision, and a site client application submitted by Sunday River Skiway Corporation concerning Southridge Bicycle Trails. Prior to attending to the above business, the board must first conduct some administrative procedures, first of which is attendance. Per Section 2B of the Newry Planning Board ordinance amended June 8, 2021, the board is made up of three voting members and two alternate members. In order for this meeting to proceed, I must first establish that the forum is present. The forum consists of two voting members. Gooch is a voting member. I am a voting member, so let the record show that we had a forum. Also, let the record show that the third voting member of the board has resigned.
Retired.
Retired, excuse me. I will also, at this point, appoint Rob as a member of the board, voting member of the board for this meeting and agree with the fact that we are shy of one full-time member. A voting member that was absent for previous meetings is not eligible to vote on any old business unless they have completed an affidavit stating that they had reviewed the material for the missed meeting. I do not believe we have any one old business to carry forward and two. Oh, no, you were absent. You were here? You were absent. But there was no old business to carry forward, so no affidavit. Unless you want to take one. Thank you very much for doing that. Having reviewed voting eligibility, we will now move on to the minutes of the prior meeting. Does any member of the board have any edits or comments on the minutes for the June 18th meeting? Rob? Gooch? If there are no comments or edits, I will indicate a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
I have a second motion.
The motion and a second has been made to approve the minutes of the June 18th meeting of the Planning Board as written. Any discussion? There are no discussions. I'll take the vote. Three. As the record show, that the minutes were approved. We'll now move on to business for tonight. First of which is correspondence received. We already have a letter from Bruce Pierce announcing his retirement from the board. Any other correspondence that has been brought to the board's attention?
I don't. Nothing for this board.
Okay, we don't want to know anything else. Let's move on to the pre-application conference for Lot Summit Estate subdivision. Free application conference are detailed in Section 9 of the Uniform Development Review Ordinance. This conference has been requested by the applicant, Mall Ride LLC. This conference is not a review, and the Planning Board will not discuss nor deliberate any part of the applicant's preliminary plans as being in conformance with or not in conformance with any town ordinance. The applicant is requested to abide by these rules. As chair, it's my responsibility to enforce these rules. Is that, are you clear about that? At this point, I will turn the floor over to Mall Ride LLC, and I guess you are representing me?
I am, yeah, thank you. So for the record, Rick's under with Mainland Development Consultants, representing the applicant, and also Chris Patterson, representing the applicant himself in the LLC. So we've got to do this together. We're seeking the board's opinion tonight, preliminarily on Lot Summit Estates, which is slated to start construction in Newry. It's a previously approved subdivision. And what's our question is, the condition of approval, or one of the conditions of approval on the plan is that fire protection suppression will be handled through fire systems, water storage systems on the side. The plan that's in front of us kind of highlights where those plant locations are. Originally, when it was approved, the fire suppression method was sprinklers. And then, I think it was 2016 or so, the applicant at the time, sorry, 2014, asked for an amendment to move to systems. And it would be the desire of the applicant to move back to sprinkler buildings. Seems like a fairly simple change. I think the fire department is today and always was in favor of the sprinkler buildings versus the sisters. Though even things that seem simple, we just want to make sure that we understand fully what the board would need for application.
Excuse me a minute. Rob, could you lower that line, please?
Rick's got a halo around his head. Yes, that's all the desires I have.
That's wherever I go.
Some train you require?
Thank you, Joel. Much better. I shut it off. You can, but they were cold and lemon. All right, I'll play with the remotes.
Just put the fan on the lower speed.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right, Rick, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but.
Now I can, I can. No one has to scoot that you.
So that's essentially why we're here. We think this is in everyone's interest, but we'd like to understand what this thing looks like and what the application process would look like and review process would look like. As I think there's not an interest to spend tens of thousands of dollars on a full application with all the resources that would go into a new element or something along those lines. And that would probably tip the scales on whether we, what I say to the applicant, submits an amendment to go back to sprinklers or stays with the systems. So our thought is that we would likely submit the four required forms, a lot of which would say an A on this change. And there would likely be a lot of accompaniment certificates with those forms. Complimentary, obviously, especially the doubt presented to us again. And perhaps the document, example of the document would be recorded to change that permission. But that's just what we're suggesting why we're asking the question.
So I guess the first question is, are there any systems in place at this time?
No, so construction hasn't started yet, so no, there aren't any.
So it's not in Newry. How about the Bethel part?
I believe, I don't want to speak out here, but I believe that Bethel denied that request.
Correct.
So Bethel stayed sprinkled. Newry went to systems, so there shouldn't be assistance.
But there is a system on the Bethel side. For the approved amendment.
There was one shown at the time that it was being presented.
I believe it's part of the approved amendment. Down there at the intersection of abandoned at the elbow. I know it probably hasn't been constructed, but there is a, there is a system location there for the approved amendment.
So I think by that time.
This, this is, let's get one thing straight. There's one, there's only one approved application. Bethel didn't approve an application, and Newry didn't approve an application. There is one approved application. It just is complicated by the fact that the subdivision crosses municipal borders, and the municipalities have agreed to not require joint meetings for items, there's a detailed list that can be made available, that only basically affects one town or the other. So what your, your request is properly being handed to Newry because you're, it's basically phase two, which is illegal in the Newry section. But let's be clear, there's only one application.
What I'm, what I'm not aware of, that you'd take a little research to figure out, what could be done, is whether that agreement was placed at the time that we were sorting out the two different approvals of.
I believe so.
Which I guess makes sense why we're laying it with Bethel saying they're the same.
I think that agreement probably came about because of that request. I think it was about that same timeframe.
I missed part of this because I went in to look at my plan.
But the original, the original inter, inter-town agreement, I think dates back to about 2014 and thereabouts.
I keep Lot Summit out of the file, I'm pretty sure.
Gooch, any other thoughts that you have?
Oh, and so the structures that are in Bethel now have sprinklers.
There are those structures in Newry.
So, so when, well, my dates are a little fuzzy. When the developer, the subdivision came to both towns back in 2014 or thereabouts in order and requested to do away with sprinklers and put in systems. And at that time, as the applicant stated, the town of Bethel said, phase one stays with sprinklers. And I think at that time, they were probably already building one or two houses to meet. And then the Newry town board, which I think you were a member of at the time.
I think so.
Approved, approved the amendment.
The date on this is February 19, 2014.
But interestingly enough, the system's location included one system that was on the Bethel side of the town line. I'm not quite sure what the engineering was of that.
As I remember, one of those systems was on a 12% grade. And I remember making the statement that, has anybody started a fire truck on a 12% grade stock? For some reason, it just went flying over his head.
Rob?
I'm wondering, because I probably said that experience, but when does the process form?
Good question. Unfortunately, the U D R O does not address amendments specifically. So by default, an amendment requires a full application. Now, remember that the review process is a two-step process. The first question that the board has to answer is, has the applicant submitted sufficient information for us to deliberate on? And we make that as, that's the application is complete process. We make no deliberation, no judgment as to whether the material submitted is correct or not. It's just that they have submitted their application, and we feel that we have enough information before to make deliberations. Once we find the application complete, then the board moves on and now starts to see that the application is in compliance or not in compliance with the ordinance.
Can we look at documents from 2014 and see how it's handled?
So, so the, that's, there's some, there's some fine, there's some in between the, the print in between my sentences there in that we, the board needs sufficient evidence presented to it to make a decision. In this case, the decision is an amendment for the change the apple tree to a pear tree. And so if the applicant submits sufficient evidence that justifies and allows us to deliberate and find that yes, changing your apple tree to a pear tree is in compliance with the ordinance or is in compliance with conditions or is not in compliance.
Mr. Chairman, may I address the applicant? Chris, you have talked to Chris about this just verbally. Section 22. That needs to be reviewed by you and your developer, okay, and the U D R O. Read that. If you have questions, please call me. But you and I have talked about the waiver process.
Oh.
Correct?
Yep. About the questions.
Yes, yeah. A complete application. Review Section 22.
So that document, that's what we reviewed in 2014.
We reviewed this in 2014. We reviewed this in 2024. This is the new joint agreement.
I think that's the original application.
It is. This is 2007.
Oh, okay.
And then the rest of it, it's about as thick, 2014.
Oh.
Yeah, it's up there.
See your question, our process in the past amendments, submit smaller habitus for amendments that basically just address the information that we're giving. So a lot of those applications are not that full one, unless it was changed to something, which is a bulk of, a big old chunk of that, that whole is.
I can't give you much more than that. We need a full application that provides sufficient evidence for us to deliberate on the amendment that you are proposing.
And being that it's not an amended process, we're going to listen to two parts.
That has not, that does not change. We have to go, we need to find your application complete, i.e., you've got jurisdiction, you have standing, you're a bona fide agent, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Those are the easy parts. And then you need to provide sufficient evidence to allow the board to deliberate and find whether or not your proposed amendment complies with the U D R O or not.
Any thoughts on public hearings and sidewalks for Section 22? Sure, or is that too early?
Too early.
It's too early.
That's too early. This is just an informal.
It's just an informal, like, you know, you may, in that case, you want to, not shout.
What's that?
The public hearing.
It depends on your application.
Depends on the, on the application and what's in there and whatnot. I, I can't give you, I can't commit the board to one thing or another without, without showing favoritism to you that I don't show to another applicant down the road.
I'm still, I think that U D R O language stuff is a pain, not a shout.
This one is a minor subdivision, or a major?
That's all right.
Or a major subdivision isn't public hearing required?
For the, definitely for the initial, for the initial application. We'll have to, we'll have to discuss that when the application's made, whether or not for an amendment that would be required.
So the, the subdivision is approved. This is just an amendment.
Correct.
You still require a public hearing?
That's for the board to decide. It's, is, you know, again, is changing the apple tree to a pear tree going to cause public concern and interest? If not, then we can say no public hearing is required because one's already approved the application. If changing the apple tree to a pear tree is, fills up the room with interested parties, then public hearing probably would have to be, would be required.
I like an inquiry that mode of thinking, but if it's. I, I like the review that mode of thinking, but if it's considered a new, a new subdivision application for a, like Rob was talking about, for a, a major subdivision in a language that shouts.
Well, well, you said new application. This is an amendment to an existing application.
Okay, I thought we had just talked about that, there was, there's no amendment process.
There is no amendment process, so the first, the, the application procedure is the one and only application procedure that is outlined in chapter 10 of, section 10 of the U D R O, in all its glory and infinite pages. That it's an amendment to an approved application, and therefore it could very well be likely that nobody cares that you're changing an apple tree to a pear tree. And, and a public hearing will not, would therefore not be required. But the, I can't, the board can't say that right now, one way or the other. If I can get myself clear. And so, and that's why I say, give us enough evidence to support and carry out your obligation, your burden of proof that the amendment that you are proposing is in compliance with the ordinance and other ordinances. Correct? Now, keep in mind, keep in mind that part of that is the very last criteria of approval is, are you, is the applicant in compliance with existing ordinances of the town? And has no violations? So I would, if I were you, I would make sure that you are totally in compliance with the conditions of approval. All 20 of them.
Yeah.
That the original application and any amendments put forth. And it's one application, whether it's Bethel or Newry's immaterial, it's one application.
I was just gonna say that. All the conditions are approval, doesn't matter, there's no, there's no town line in between. It's an approved project as a whole.
Just be mindful that the planning board is a review board, we are not an enforcement authority. Enforcement of the application, the ordinances, estate regulations, and all that fall on the shoulders of the Code Enforcement Officer. Merritt, any? Gooch?
No, I think I'm, okay.
Okay. As you, I don't know where the application is at. I would, I hope that, and I, the board will expect that you, the applicants, will know the history of that application better than the board does. That's how you avoid any snafus.
It's about 18 years worth of it.
A little light reading, come on up.
The father was involved in some of it.
There's all sorts of things that.
Is it, are we, are we giving you what you're looking for without getting, without selling the store out?
I think, I think we're doing a lot of it. We get everything that you think we need, or you have anything else?
I think so.
Awesome. Well, thank you folks for.
Yeah, thank you.
There's a lot of here told.
No, sit back.
Oh, we can drop.
No, I mean, I thought I was gonna wear it.
Oh. Oh, great.
That will deal with that problem.
Oh, I don't want to make your furniture. Yes, yes.
Thank you. Okay, bye, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
See ya.
See ya. Can you guys talk out loud for me? We were just wondering about the changes that we did to the others. Okay.
Maybe you need copies of the.
I have, I have all the copies in there.
Okay. Moving on, let's move on to the site plan review for South Ridge Bicycle Trails. And let's, let's see where's my.
So we had a little mix-up with Juneteenth. We did have some nicer copies down there. I don't know if anybody wants one with tabs and a binder. If not, then.
Yeah, you have your hand over here.
And can you just state your name?
Sure, I'll take one. Peter Roberts, Sunday River Skiway Corporation.
I'll take the tab, sure. Just.
More than ever made, I think.
No different than the, it's the same material, just.
Same materials down.
Well, can we have the latest of this?
Uh, the latest one was May 1st, 2025.
Um, good, thank you.
Believe that's right way to the.
Do you?
Okay, let the record show that this is a site plan review. As per jurisdiction, let there are findings of fact show that the U D R O, section 1, C2C, states that activity that has been inactive for two years or more requires a site plan application. I believe the bike park has been norm, for more than two years, is it not?
Yep.
And therefore, the conclusion of law is that the planning board has jurisdiction. I would take a motion supporting that, please.
I make a motion that the planning board has jurisdiction over the Sunday River Bike Park, which I was going to get passed, referred to by number of government.
We're getting, we're, we'll get there.
Okay. I'll second that.
All right. It's been motioned and seconded that the planning board does have jurisdiction, citing the findings of fact that were relayed just previously. Any discussion? No discussion, I'll take a vote.
One, two.
Three. Let the record show that the planning board has jurisdiction. Let, for findings of fact, show that the applicant has provided reference to the Oxford County Registry of Deeds, book number 4213, page 187, specifically Schedule A, Parcel 1 of that, the recording. And also a separate regist, uh, recording in the Registry of Deeds of book number 1095, page 114, which is a lease between the applicant and the owner of the parcel, number R12-26, commonly known as the Penley lease. Given that evidence, the conclusion of law is that the applicant has standing and need discussion from the board members. I will take a motion that the applicant has standing.
I made a motion that the applicant has standing on this application. I'll second that.
A motion has been made with a second, that the applicant has standing. Any further discussion? Vote, please.
One, two.
Three. Let the record show that the applicant has standing. Let the findings of fact show that, um, there is a letter from a Brian Yon, who is the general manager of the Sunday River Skiway Corporation. And that letter is dated April 4th, right, correction, April 23rd, 2025. And that letter provides authorization for the Peter Roberts to represent the Sunday River Skiway Corporation in front of this board. Is there any discussion towards that letter of agency? Here in none, I will make the conclusion of law that Mr. Roberts has agency to represent the Sunday River Skiway Corporation in front of this board in the matter of the bike park trail application. I'll take a motion to that, please.
I make a motion that Peter Roberts has standing on this application.
Motion has been made with a second, that Peter Roberts, professional engineer, State of Maine, has standing or agency, I need to rephrase that, has agency to represent Sunday River Skiway Corporation in the matter before the board. Are those in favor?
One, two.
Three. Let the record show that the chairperson, Ted Baker, is an employee of the Sunday River Skiway Corporation. However, I have significantly less than 10% interest in the Sunday River Skiway Corporation and even less interest in its parent company, Boyd USA. And therefore, by 30- A MSRA, section 2605, I do not have a financial conflict of interest. I also have no blood relations, family relations, or other intimate relations with any member of Sunday River. And therefore, I do not, in my estimation, have a bias. Other board members?
I'm also an employee of Sunday River, I have less than 10% ownership, no ownership, and no bias.
Rob?
I am not associated at all. Unassociated.
Mr. Roberts, would you like to contest anybody on the board as being biased?
No.
Let the record show that the board members have disclosed their affiliation with Sunday River, if they had one, and that no bias has been determined to exist, and that the applicant does not wish to contest any of that. While we're speaking of biases, Mr. Roberts, would you mind if we allow the alternate, the CEO and the recording secretary to partake in the discussions during this review?
Yes, I'm glad to, I'm glad.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Let's move on to additional fee required. Any thoughts on this? What's that?
Will the town have an interview? What would it be? I'm pretty familiar with it.
I don't know, but do you, do you feel the need to have a, a third-party engineer involved in this?
I don't see a question that I would answer.
Gooch, help with the code option here, that have a third, a third-party engineer.
She's looking for an excuse to go hiking.
If that's the case, then I will take a motion to the fact that no additional fee is required.
Oh, you want a motion on that?
Yes.
I make a motion that no additional fees required for third-party.
I'll second that.
A motion with a second has been made, that no additional fee need to be collected for outside consultation to the board. Any further discussion? Here in none, I'll take a vote. One, two, three. Let the record show that no additional fee is required. Mr. Roberts, at this time, you may present your plan, or your site plan to the board, please.
Um, did you get, uh, all of my 17 properties of the drawings?
Yes.
So, the, the proposed projects, historically, there was a mountain bike park at Sunday River from, it, it came in two or three different stages, starting somewhere in the early 90s and then 2018. And so, we've talked at length over the years about starting something new. We're not committed to necessarily doing that this year, but I got part of the conversation that probably comes in probably to get permits for it. But looking initially to do some bicycle trails in the South Ridge area, although the top of the queue, which is kind of defined by the bridge on the ski trail. We had a preliminary hike around with Joel, and kind of explained our intention to permit the area. We showed some concept trails for reference. That would be definitely making adjustments to those of the field as we learn how the process of inspection we talked about with Joel, would be to do a preliminary sidewalk after our team kind of identified where they want to be along the trail to go. And then a closed-out sidewalk if it happens to make sure that we've covered our bases and put everything to the satisfaction of the community. I think at this point, we'd be looking to do two or maybe three trails in that area, and then possibly raking and restoring more or two of the existing trails that have, um, have existed in that area predating my time here.
So this would be access through lift number two, or?
Yep.
So you would be running two lifts in those days at the bike park?
Yeah, that's the concept that we have right now.
Expansion possibilities?
Yes, I think there's, uh, if this goes through, I think there would be a desire over the next five to 10 years to build it out and include other lifts. But the scope of what that would look like is still being discussed to a point where we don't feel like we, A, have the scope goal of defined, and B, we think the schedule would be beyond the sunset limit of the permit anyway, so it made sense to permit one pod and then come back and apply for a permit to do an expansion in the future.
Robbie, Gooch, go ahead and ask any questions if I see it.
Well, I can't say we've ever seen a map like this one. Took me a while to figure out what it looks. So this section that's on the, um, funny round.
On the what?
On that round that's got three magic carpets on it.
Yeah, I guess I didn't mention that. I think we would like to do a children's, kind of beginner area around where the magic carpet learning area is for ski school. It's for age four to six, you're right.
Is that, I'm sorry, I don't know what magic carpet is, is that the 17 and 18?
Yeah, they're basically just comparables that come around.
16, 17, 18. No, 16, 17 and 18.
Well, these two are just 17 and 18.
Yes, 16 is below.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yep.
So, Gutcher, did you have a question about that?
Well, I always thought it was field, basically, but obviously, there's going to be some sort of definition of where to go.
Well, I think what we would do is go into the media editor and shape the trail with two relative curves in the corners. And then you probably, we see everything in the grass except for your kind of travel tract through the trail. So we get off the top of that conveyor and clear out the follow-up.
So that area gets re-graded yet again. Okay. Peter, could you give us a rundown on the main law that doesn't require you to go after a DEP permit?
Well, the legislature passed a law five or six years ago that you are not required to get stormwater permits from the state for hiking, biking, and ATVing on the trails. However, we're under the site application of the Alvin Act, which is a permit for larger construction sites. So we don't really get to apply that exemption. But the site law has exemptions to allow us to do certain amount of expansion every year without going to the state for a permit. And so I think in this first phase, we wouldn't expect to exceed the state's limit on what we can do in a calendar year. And so I sent an email to a couple of people at the DEP, the original licensing manager and the original director of the manager. We just gave them an FYI of what we're working out and passing that in comments and made sure we had some technicals.
Right, so it's possible that a future expansion would require DEP intervention or review?
Yeah, depending on how much we do in a calendar year, that could eventually push us over that limit. I don't think it will in this phase. But I think if we were to come back and permit another part of the mountain for bike trails, I think there's a possibility we also have to permit that.
So the applicant is basically standing, he's going to be coming back to us time and time again for this. Is that correct?
Well, not for the piece of property that's shown in the way.
Right, but for any further change?
I think that there's, there would be an intent in the future of expanding it. So some comments given.
So there's vague ideas of the future, but nothing that you can put on paper?
Yeah, nothing that the keepers of the first strings are ready to agree on. I think the consensus is we need to start out building something for children and then go from there versus the old bike park, which was only geared towards really extreme experience riders. Tends to be a pretty small percentage of the demographic and also tend to not have a lot of money to pump into revenue. So most of the successful bike parks everywhere across the country would have found most of their revenue success in children's programs.
It's like skiing.
The original bike park went way out the other edges of this.
How to catch them?
Yeah, there was several trails back as far as 1988.
There's actually a site plan application back in...
1998, the only one I found in our files was from like a BMX. And it was that white heat?
Yeah, White Cap.
White Cap, thank you. I never get that right. And it talked about water slides and something else. It was definitely a summer-themed event. I never saw that that ever came to fruition.
I think it did, and I think it was abandoned very quickly.
Okay.
It was a water slide at one time.
They had a water park there, yeah. No, it was a big adventure.
So they sold it to somebody else. When do you plan on start this construction?
The funding has not been approved. Our original plan was to start in July, but very likely will get pushed until next year or even positive year after. I guess it's determined that once we're approved and once we get ready to start.
For future experience purposes in front of this board, would you be willing to redo your application as a phased site plan?
Are you looking for a re-application of what we got now?
I'm looking to a rewrite of what you have now, adding wording about this being a phased development. Even though you don't have specific plans for trail, actual trails for phase, future phases, you do have conceptual plans for future phases.
So we talked a little bit about this, and one of the, I guess, concerns we had was there's a different permit application where we discussed having multiple extensions on the permit. And so if we have stuff that we are confident will not be built until after the term of the permit and its extension have been over, does that still make sense to have as a?
Well, right now, after site plan approval by this board, should we approve it? You have 24 months to start significant construction. And once you start construction, at that time, the second clock starts and you have 18 months to complete, substantially complete construction. As long as you come to the board one month before the expiration of the 18-month time for completion, you can get a one-year, you can request a one-year extension. And it's a one and only time deal. You can't keep going back year after year after year for an extension without having to go through the resubmital of the application. And whereas if this is approved as a phased development...
Would you start that clock every time the phase came online?
Well, that's everybody turns to Section 3E of the UDRO.
You got it? Peter, you have it?
I believe the magic here is that the phase can be ten years.
Yes. Okay, Rob? Section 3E.
3E.
Starting completion of construction. And down like the third, fourth paragraph down talks about phasing.
Okay, so we could do a phase plan over 10 years. So it would be, I don't know, that 18-month completion for all of it.
Correct.
Like the 18-month, they have to be phased.
And then you buy yourself, you're free from us?
Yeah, we talked about that. I think it's a good application. Okay, so would the board's preference be to table this and come back with a revised application in two weeks? Or?
Yeah. Well, two weeks might be an issue, but in a month would be good. If we come back in two weeks, we'll have to have a reschedule meeting because we have something else happening on the 16th.
So it's resubmital by the 16th. We come back on April or, sorry, August, the other A.
Yeah, first meeting in August.
The other A.
August 3rd or whatever.
Yeah.
August 6th. Yeah, if you're not looking right around, I think...
Yeah, I haven't been given any authorization for one of them, so...
So that will give you time to word your application and describe the phasing in such a way that you don't have to have exact trails outlined for phases two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10?
Yeah, I think we could just patch, you know, parcels.
Parcels.
As far as the application fee, would that be based on conceptual build-out of the whole thing, or would that be based on phase one?
What was the application fee for this?
I mean, not that far, because I went on vacation. Sorry.
So I brought a check for the construction, 1/10th of 1% of the construction estimated cost for phase one.
Yep.
I guess my question would be, are you going to get a check?
I would, can you do a cost estimate 10 years out for what it would cost to build trails?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah, I know. That's what I'm saying.
Right now, it is a number of four, which thinks this will be.
Right.
It could be way much, way not too much. So...
I don't know how to figure the fee on what may happen.
I don't know, like, does the board do conditional approval on these?
That's kind of what I'm wondering.
As your experience tells us, the board can do conditions on a lot of things.
You just can't talk about them in pre-application.
You just can't talk about them in pre-application.
I did see a construction estimate here, I swear to God.
And there is one in there, yes.
I have the non-tab version, so...
Do we do it for a regular Sunday, a phased Sunday?
This isn't a subdivision, this is a site plan.
How would we do it? How would we get application fee for that?
Base it off what they're going to build.
So there is looking at that.
Yeah, yeah. But that's easier because we usually see lots.
Oh, yeah.
I'm trying to find the section on E's here. You can stop on the field.
There it is.
Where is it at?
Thanks for keeping me on the spot.
All applications shall be accompanied by an application fee as established by the select board payable to the town or new areas. Such fees shall not be refundable. Planning board at its discretion may require the applicant to pay an additional fee to aid the planning board that's reviewed the application submission. Said additional fee to be either 50% of the application fee or $10,000 or greater. And the fee schedule for the...
Why do you have to ask me that?
Is the subdivision based on the overall cost?
So it's 250 and then 1/10th of 1%?
Of the estimated...
Of the estimated cost. I just don't know how we estimate cost, but they can touch subdivision as like by lot.
By lot. Would the app, well, by the way, we are negotiating phasing, which is allowed in the UDRO. Should I make that clear for everybody? And this is the negotiation between us and the applicant. A condition of approval that would require you to come back to either the board or the code enforcement officer required to start in the next phase.
With an estimate?
With an estimate and a cost and the application fee for that portion.
Days ago.
Days ago.
I might go ahead.
I'm willing to be that. You can just come to the code enforcement officer before deemed that acceptable.
And if you would put that in your application write-off?
I think that would be easier to legend for on our terms to people that would be accustomed to go versus paying some giant fee and then maybe actually do it all or not.
Incorporate completion and anything else.
And I'll say, when I started, and Sunday River had an escrow account with the town, and we were constantly moving money in. It was just, it was cumbersome. The auditor did not like it. So I think I like this a lot. It's a lot cleaner for the business and the town's accounts.
So you don't owe me my money.
Right.
Rob, what are your thoughts on anything here before us?
To have a general question about the application fee, which is, what is the purpose of the application?
It goes to, well, it's no different than my building permits. It offsets what this board gets paid. It offsets anything that, you know, administrative in the office, it offsets my time, all of that.
Because as I say, if it's just all paid for us, we're doing it once in a while, so it's worth doing again. But it's paying for you and for administration.
Yeah.
Application fee for the Jordan Day, we all could add new cars.
Yeah. I don't think I need to see the 250 again. I think what all I need is just the 1/10th of 1% of this cost estimate for whatever phase, trail building is happening. I don't, I don't need the 250. 250 is one and done.
Is that new? Because I've always just understood it to be 250 or 1/10th of 1%.
Preliminary review is 250, and then it's the 1/10th of 1%. $25 minimum.
That was, the fee schedule was re-approved once and a half ago, two months?
Yeah, 4/1. So this might be new from the select board. Yeah, it was dated 4/1/25. So yes, new to you.
All right.
Come to the select board, maybe, soon.
Yeah, no thanks. I'm going to have to work it out.
All right, so we've negotiated a phasing agreement. And you'll, we'll table this application and you will come back with a revised application that incorporates phase, word for phasing. That will give you a 10-year window to expand. And we handled the fee aspect of this. Is there anything else that, while we're in this process of important data that you need to know about?
No, we'll take the next two weeks to draft this up and probably run some questions by Joel when it comes to the notes that regard, you know, conditional approval and things.
The board, while we're not deliberating, the performance standards, there are only a limited number of performance standards that apply to this. And I think your evidence that you submitted... And I think your evidence that you submitted addresses most of that. And I'd say they are in compliance, you know, you're saying that's going to address that.
Okay.
Well, I'm kind of interested in what you're going to do, what the boundary, the boundary skiers are going to do when they run into these obstacles and those. But that's not, that's not part of the.
I think you have like until the twenty-fourth, because it's like a three week.
Oh, we got till twenty-fourth. But yeah, we got probably two of the most dedicated boundary, boundaries skiers, resorts, so we're going to pull this up by ourselves.
Mobile that we didn't know about.
Joel, in terms of inspections, anything?
No, Carson's been doing the inspections for the lifts on Merrill Hill and submitting reports. I expect it's going to look very similar to that, and I will, I, we, well, Sunday River and I will work in making sure we submit those types of things and I keep them on file in my office.
And what about after trail completion? Any concerns?
Not unless, we can get a December twenty twenty-three story.
Skate trails.
Right, then it's more than just a bike trail being impacted, so I think if I can see the level of diligence that was performed for the Merrill Hill lifts and new ski trails, then I think I'm comfortable with their revitalization program.
Meredith, do you have any? Rob, thank you for your contributions. Anything else?
Yeah, just one stupid thing. On ten dot two, there's a section here that's a required section that is not built in by some street or system.
I made a mistake. I didn't get to my heart.
What in this?
The growth management district controlling zone fire.
It may have just been an issue, I don't know whether you can get the fillable PDF and put it.
Yeah, we've had to butcher the fillable PDF because it doesn't work in what being just the PDF editor here, so, but yeah, we'll redo that.
Is that stupid?
I have noticed that with some of your stuff that you sent me to review first, it's like, why is this all in different formatting? Yeah, got it.
That's incompatibility between the generated PDF and the interpreted.
Yeah, I don't know if there's some, something that Open Office puts in place to protect it from being edited, but.
The author of the form might have put such protections in there. I don't know, I can't remember who did that, but.
Well, I'll reach out to my editor.
I can spot brokers.
Yeah. See if we can't find you.
All right, Gooch. Some discussion. So, we have not yet found the application complete. We have discussed and negotiated phasing plan. The applicant has agreed to come back with an amended application. Does that affect? And we'll look at this probably in.
August sixth.
August sixth.
Yep.
Oh. Those two boppers. Oh, well, let's take care, let's take care of those waivers right now. The applicant has, we're jumping down to, well, first of all, the application fee has been paid, I believe, or is it not correct?
It's not correct.
It's incorrect.
Okay, so the application fee is still pending. We have assigned this an application number of twenty-five dash two eight eight, Gooch? And the applicant has asked two waivers. One is for an abbreviated list of abutters. And Peter, why just an abbreviated list of abutters as opposed to no notification to any abutters, which is what we did for the pump house?
I felt that some of these trails will be fairly close to some of the kind of associations, and it would be, you know, our best interest in the long term to identify them of things that they can see from their windows versus a project that's not going to see from anybody's house.
And you are, instead of a thousand feet from the parcel boundary, you're asking a thousand feet from the site itself. It winds down.
So that, so I'm going to interject there. So if we're going to do a phased project, is that going to be, this is phase one? And that's what we're notifying the abutters on?
Yeah, I don't think that future phases would increase the list of abutters maybe by a little bit, because generally we're kind of headed in the north and west direction away from civilization.
And Becky, for the record, I'm talking about the plan, lift two, trail pod, is one of three of the plans that we submitted.
They are definitely the ones on Sundance, very close to the abutters.
Okay, I was just wanting to make that clear.
Meredith, any questions on this waiver request? And the list of names you submitted with your application reflects that shortened list? Rob? You good?
Yeah, I think so.
Gooch?
Just found a mistake on page two of his abutters. Right column thirty-one down. Boulder Construction, P O Box C D, Greenwich, Maine.
Um, yeah. Most easily just generated by.
That, that might be an edit in our text. I was going to say, I think we need a letter from our side. Directly from our site, so that was edited here at our office. Which one, what number, so?
No, it says East Greenwich, Maine, oh four two six one, which is Newry's zip.
Right, which page are you on?
Oh, second page.
Second?
Right column thirty-one down.
Just approve it, David. Good job. Good job. I'm impressed. All right, I will make the motion that the applicant's request to modify the abutters list to those abutters that are within one thousand feet of the site, project, the project site as opposed to the parcel boundary B or N.
My motion of that.
That's a motion, that's my motion.
Oh, I'll second.
The motion then, with a second, has been made to approve the applicant's request for modifying the abutter list to limit the abutters to just those that are within one thousand feet of the site, the post-site plan as opposed to the parcel boundary. Has been made. Any discussion? Here and done, I'll take a vote. Three. The second waiver request from the applicant is to do away with a performance guarantee. Performance guarantees are kept to section twenty-one, twenty-three. In a way, twenty-one. And it requires performance guarantees for major and minor subdivisions. It does not say anything about site plans, which infers that the board may waive the performance guarantee for a site plan. Now, it's a finding of fact, by the way. And therefore, I will make a motion that we approve the waiver request to do away with a performance guarantee on this application. Motion has been made with a second to grant the applicant's waiver request to do away with a performance guarantee on this second plan application. Any discussion? Here and done, I'll take a vote. One, two, three. The motion passes. Okay, so we are down to, with the exception of the, I had to inform the applicant about the, your timeframe to, for submitting material to the board, which I think you are well aware of. We are down to, is the application complete or not? We will table the application at this time, pending revisions to the application by the applicant to cover phasing and the one conditional approval of the application fee.
Good.
Okay. The application twenty-five dash two eighty has been tabled until the sixth of August.
Peter, do you want to rewrite this to the law?
Um, we will be creative ones. I think there's going to probably be easier information. Either Parsons or included in some of that.
Peter, since you are a repeat offender or visitor.
Tell me, sounds better.
At these, in front of the board. Can we come up with a method to refer to the standing requirement? That we can just refer to that shorthand?
You mean the letter that Sunday, that Boyd or Sunday River writes giving Peter agency?
No, not agency, the standing that, so that, while, while, while Peter probably already has fifty copies of the deed printed out for future applications to alleviate, and I think what you did in, in Form ten point two, and you were one of the first people who's used that space that was put in there of things, is if you could expand on that just a little bit more.
Then we wouldn't need eighteen copies of the same deed.
Would not need to.
Because the expiration date of the deed is.
We have come a ways because we use a printable deed, and we don't need that parcel.
Yeah.
So you want to.
I'd like to alleviate having to have the entire deed unless you feel it is necessary in there.
So keep a copy of the deed unfiled and then, well, I guess it's unfiled.
But it's just, no, just the reference, you already have a reference in ten point two. Expand on that reference, and maybe, maybe it doesn't have to, maybe we just use that. That the, that, that surpasses the, the, the finding of standing and will facilitate your job by not having to compile the penalty lease and anything else.
Do I say the tree?
Would you really encourage proof of ownership?
Yes, proof of ownership.
Yeah, typically, when I started here, we would just write, you know, a copy of the deed, it's all filed in the town office or something like that. Say like the certificate of cooperation or something like that.
Well, that's only one page, it's a different, but you can.
The deed's fully prepared, easy.
Right.
So, okay, so you add in the Form ten point two where it says the checklist, a copy of the deed.
Well, that, I think, uh, let me go back.
You just check not applicable to that one.
Ten point two, or was it ten point one that you got? Maybe it's ten point one. Yeah, yeah, ten point one provides a statement describing the interest the applicant has in the parcel to be developed.
Okay.
And if you can use that section right there.
And then the checklist on ten point two where.
Yes, refer to that.
Yeah, okay.
Or you can say that it's, you know, it's covered in that. And that way we can expedite, I'm getting tired of reading the penalty lease over and over again.
I want you to read it because.
I knew a lot of those guys. I'm not stopping you from reading. All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you guys, appreciate it.
We'll see you in four weeks' time or five weeks' time. Uh, we have no findings of fact to review for tonight's meeting.
Nope.
And Joel, I know you've been out of the office except for today, this week. But do you have any reports of past meetings?
No, oh, no.
Open discussion.
Open discussion.
Thank you guys.
Superb, so come on.
You've got.
Yeah.
The floor is open for general discussion.
It's normal, we have a meeting on the sixteenth.
Right now, we have no business, no new business on the sixteenth, as we brought to the town's attention. Director, well?
I have nothing for the sixteenth.
And in lieu of the fact that we have a Board of Appeals public hearing at five o'clock in this room on the sixteenth, I think it would be appropriate to cancel the meeting.
Okay, because we don't know how long that's going to last.
I'm not sure on how long it's going to last. And whether or not, even if it lasts for short period of time, whether or not we want to have a meeting afterwards.
I can see, I can see the ears of Meredith's mind going.
Woo-hoo, Wednesday at all.
All right, any other open discussion?
Very preliminary, I'm looking to software for recording. So if you want to accompany or make out to the facility, pack it into a laptop, deploy an external mic, make out with software, but it does recording, it does. It's always, it's a big stuff with, including self-call, I think. I don't know how much this is going to cost you, I don't think it's a subscription, you know, I think, so that might actually be.
Sorry, I put anything on this, this is, would that go through Sunday River's, I mean, this is Sunday River's.
No, no, they will go on tech.
Okay, yeah.
So I'm going yours.
So you'll just be recording on that one?
But you can still, you can still do everything you do on yours.
Right, but the recording would be on that one, then I can copy it over and over as a job.
The thing I'm looking for is.
Do you need a recording on this one, or do you put, don't you put the recording on that one?
Yes, she does.
I put the recording on, I saved it on, I put the recording on that one, so if someone comes to the office tomorrow, they can. Recording on this one, so that I can run with it.
And which one, which one did you push up the Dropbox, this one or that one?
This one. I just, I only put it there.
There would be, instead of.
I don't come back to the town office.
Okay, so you just would have to transfer whatever machine captures it to your laptop?
Yeah, that way I can.
What I'm checking is whether it's a state of clouds situation, in which case it's already cloud, you just have to access it. Theoretically, it would also be visible by not just the Plaiming Board, but by everybody in the town or anything. And so that's the idea, and ideally we get an external mic. So that, that's the idea. And ideally, if you get an external mic, that's a good quality. To set up and all the kind of things.
Is Brooke?
Yes. I was in here today setting up and a fellow from, who was in front, the, that was working on the...
He's our IT guy.
The IT guy.
Yeah.
And so we talked about putting in a permanent camera here. And it would be live broadcast. So accompanied with the audio, it would be the permanent record. If anybody wanted to come into it, you refer them to Connerie's YouTube website. There would always be a backup.
Oh, but it's, it's already gonna be there for free. I'm not sure. I don't have to chase it further.
What's that?
It's already gonna be here and it's already gonna be available. The only thing I would think about is when we have the town meetings and stuff fits in the other, like the green.
Oh, right. Then you call on what TV because, and we can do it with mobile.
Okay, I'm not sure what the, what the implications are for the town relationship.
Well, it's, uh, town business is public access. Right, and that's the...
In other ways, we want the town to absolutely have the recording.
They would have it, they would have it on, on the unit. They would also record it.
But I guess what I, I think what Rob's trying to get at is like, during an illegal proceeding, I have to be able to send them something from this office. Would we be able to download that, your recording on the town computer?
I'm sure that we could figure it out.
Yeah.
Would you be able to contribute in the process?
I guess I could. I'm not really adding a lot of value from, from that aspect at all. I'm just doing the basic research.
Yeah.
We don't need to do the research. That's fine.
Yeah, I don't know because none of this was budgeted for this year. So really need to get the town administrator involved too.
I was talking to Loretta before this, so basically what I was gonna do, but maybe I shouldn't, we'd come up and get some information and come back and say, this is what I found. But if we're not gonna need it, there's no point in chasing it.
Well, it depends on how, I mean, this was supposed to be hardwired a year ago. We haven't been able to do it yet because technology is changing, so... Yeah, well, let's just say this is an open conversation and it's not done yet.
Does the town need audio and, like, because I don't know how big that file would be to send somebody?
I can't send, I, I can't send the audio files at this point through our server because they're too large.
You could, you could send it different ways to the zip file. If it's available online, because it's all public knowledge, they can just refer to YouTube, the Connerie YouTube.
Yeah, I'm not, don't know.
Sometimes I put it in the cloud and anyone who wants it could download.
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
I don't know what the issues are with, you know.
Hard copies?
Well, the, the, part of it is I was looking at a company that does this for, the point is they sell to towns. That's their, their business model, so...
Yeah.
But if it's already there, I'm not, I'm a big non-replicable, non-replicable, or...
I agree with Brooks. It is public and it's available, but on, on the same side of that is I'm not tech savvy and I don't know anything about AI. I don't know how to edit anything Brooks does on that TV. But I'm sure there's people out there that do. So is it a real permanent record from the town for legal purposes? I, I don't know.
I don't know. That'd be, I mean, this is, the technology changing like this, it's new, new questions.
Yeah, well, that's sort of what I'm asking because if, if it bounces through a third party, even the third party is, there's always this question. I mean, to some degree, the question, storage is also interesting because if there's a software package and they have, well, how are they doing their storage or do you get the storage separate?
Right.
Kind of things, so there's a big aspect of that.
Right, okay.
So, I mean, I'll hold off now because if it's gonna be a permanent, it's already there, it's hardwired.
Let me ask how that works legally for the municipality from a nonprofit TV channel. Look, I, those are things I don't know, so I'm just gonna ask.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not expecting this to...
Is it also affects the other boards?
It affects a select board, the appeals board, it affects a bunch, yeah. Okay.
That's a theory I was working on, that this would be available for...
All boards.
For any time the town wants to use it.
Yeah.
Period.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Bruce.
Let me, let me hold off on that. We'll see where that goes.
Okay, all right, I'll dig into that one. Okay.
Gooch, any open discussion items?
No.
Meredith? Bruce, thank you again very much for your service to the town.
I just wanna say I thank you very much. I truly appreciate you all. I just, I just feel like...
Yeah, yeah. Oh, that, that time comes very...
Worshipful field of cattle going on, so, yeah.
Seeing that your last recruitment was a success, I hope that you can find another one that is equally successful.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, that, that should be, we can't take your retirement until you find your replacement.
At all time, I said, as soon as, as soon as I'm cleared, I'm gonna go and post it on Facebook looking, looking for a planning board member.
Yes.
There we go, so...
Perfect.
You're on the conference.
Boom.
Nope, that's already full.
Got man's support.
That's full.
It's full? Well, most of it.
All right.
Rob and, and Meredith, please consider upgrading.
Upgrading?
I bet it gets warranted for three years. Uh, and if you could let Loretta know one way or the other when it's, when you know, okay?
Yeah.
So that we can, if have, if need be, set the press gang out to look for anybody else.
We're good.
With Becky, you can, you can also. Okay. We will therefore shortly, in the motion to adjourn, our next meeting will be on August the 6th. We will not meet on the 16th. Board members are reminded that there is a active appeal on application 25-286. And do not discuss that application with links yourselves or others in news media, et cetera, until at least the 16th. I need approval.
Pass it.
Uh, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I will take a motion to adjourn.
A motion with a second has been made to adjourn the July 2nd meeting of the Plenary Board. All those are big points. This meeting is adjourned. We will reconvene on August 36th. Happy 4th of July, everybody!
Happy 4th of July, Bruce. Thank you very much.
And I'm, I'm gonna come to the, I'm gonna come to the deals and do the, because I, yeah.